You're the one who's usually late, Mr. Mayor.[2.75][2.75][laughter] That's true.
Rough crowd tonight.
All right, we'll get started. Next up on the agenda is public comment. Public comment is used for non-agenda items that are within our purview and we prefer that comments stick to about two minutes. So if anyone has a comment, we ask that you come up to the table and state your name. And then if you don't have a comment, you can sit there and be quiet, James. Anyone on Zoom? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number three, or excuse me, item number four. Second reading of the amendments for land development regulations. Chip will take that over. Thank you, Chip.
Thank you. Just like last time, we have a sort of a companion document that summarizes things and then the actual underlined and struck-through changes are following that. The actual changes that would be made. There are some revisions since the last reading. We'll, I'll highlight those as we go through. Just quickly, the First Amendment's to replace the word "family" with "household" throughout the regs because state law now really limits our ability to create different rules for related households versus non-related households. So we're just going to go with the word "household." Amendment two changes our residential 9,500 district to the 8,700 district. And that's because the state law now doesn't allow us to require 9,500 square feet for a dwelling unit. The most we can require is 8,700. Amendment three, we're adding some defined terms and many of these come up with other changes that we make further on in the, in the document such as if we have a new rule about something and it has a new term, we got to define that term all in this section under defined terms. The one thing I've added is defining a historic structure. We, we've taken the date from St. Alvin's Historic District that we updated for the National Register and it says the period of significance of the St. Alvin's Historic District ends in 1967. So rather than have this floating 50-year historic building standard that's normally applied by historic preservationists since 1967 is important to us, we are defining historic structure as, we're using 1967 as the important year in the definition of historic structure. That's going to come up later when I show we have a new rule about demolishing buildings, which we had a conversation with Tim Hawkins about that. So you'll see how that comes into play. Amendment four, it's the longest one. It's where we do, in every different zoning district, we make sure we're following all the new state rules such as allowing a density of five units per acre all throughout the regs, making sure that you can propose a triplex or a fourplex wherever we allow a single-family home and various other changes that are all listed here. The 12 items on page three, these are the changes that we're making. And that's throughout the zoning districts. So we sort of have to do copy and paste for each, each one of them. Amendment five is just changing a summary table that's currently in the rules that, that provides a good summary and cheat sheet for, for all the changes that were in amendment number four. Amendment number six is where we implement new state rule concerning a density bonus and a building height or story bonus for affordable housing development. Nothing we can do about that. And, and as you'll hear, a constant refrain throughout these changes is that we're adjusting to new state rules. We're finally getting them into our regs. And we're also implementing some of the interim zoning that we had quickly passed when those state rules were first changed. We're getting everything into our permanent zoning. Amendment seven, we're taking this section called public facilities that gets some special allowances and we've moved that to a section in Article nine where we're going to consolidate everything that has to do with exemptions and those types of uses where our ability to regulate them is limited. And we're reusing this to insert some language that gives more direction to how we regulate properties that straddle the city-town boundary or properties in the city that are being used to get into property in the town. And the basic upshot of that rule is that we make sure that if there's a city property in a city neighborhood and in a city zoning district and it's strongly associated with a property outside the city, it's got to be limited to what you'd be, what you'd be allowed to do in that zoning district to honor the rules that have been set forth for that neighborhood. Amendment eight, we're moving some limitations on how we, how we can or can't regulate farming and forestry, moving that to Article nine as well. And we're adding in section 411. The new section 411 will be providing guidance on the ability for us to treat stormwater treatment, to permit stormwater treatment, but also allow people to treat stormwater on their properties as well. Our regulations have always been silent on that and now we'll be able to provide some direction on, on what you can do and where. Amendment nine removes a reference to plan unit developments that grants them a special non-conformity status that's no longer needed. Amendment 10 takes plan unit developments and renames them transitional lot development because plan unit developments are really something that's meant for clustering development in rural communities and they're kind of, PUDs are kind of cookie cutter inserted into everyone's zoning. That's what happened to the city too. But we adjusted PUDs to allow for more of a transition in how you can develop a lot that's right on the boundary with another zoning district. So we decided to go all in and just change the name to transitional lot development. A lot of the other aspects of traditional PUDs, we don't really need in the city. They don't really apply. Amendment 11 clarifies that the existing small lot rule, and this is sort of a big loophole rule that you can use that even if you're lot, so if you come upon a lot that's owned all by itself and it's too small, technically the lot size is too small or the lot width is too narrow to be in conformity to be developed under our regs, there's a state rule that says, well, yeah, it doesn't matter. You could still develop that lot. And that's, with some of the changes the state has made such as allowing fourplexes wherever you can allow a single-family home, that loophole got a lot bigger. So we're inserting some of what we think is the state legislative intent and saying the existing lot rule only applies to properties that are undeveloped. And this isn't a way to try and squeeze another dwelling unit into a property that might be on a small lot and right now is only a duplex and you'd like it to be a triplex. The existing small lot rule was meant so that someone can do something with a lot even if it's too small. If you're already doing something with that lot, then we think the legislative intent is, is achieved and you shouldn't be able to use this to say, oh, I should be able to turn a triplex on, into a fourplex on a really small lot. Amendment 12 takes this section about how many principal buildings are allowed on a lot and actually puts them into each zoning district. For some reason, this, this standard was sitting all by itself way out in section 503 and so we're going to bring it in and so that for each zoning district, it will say whether more than one principal building, principal building is allowed on a lot in this district. Amendment 13, we will change our parking standards to meet the new state rules, which includes that we, the most parking that we can require for a dwelling unit is one and a half spaces per dwelling unit, whereas we were requiring two or sometimes two and a half. That gets rounded up, of course, but this is some, this is another state change that we had to implement. Amendment 14 is something that we put into our interim zoning anticipating that a lot of historic homes might suddenly be proposed to be converted into multifamily. So we now have a rule that, that if you, that you can't just tack a fire escape onto the front of, of a building in the city. It can go on the sides or it can go on the back. And you can construct a fire refuge, which is sometimes required by code to allow someone to get out of a building and then be rescued by the fire department, but eventually that fire refuge has to be colored or painted or otherwise integrated into the facade of the building. Amendment 15, now this is one that we've changed. So there was, we had first proposed a rule that's actually in our interim zoning right now. The rule basically says you can't tear down a building in the central business district to provide outdoor parking or storage. The worry is that if the state's, you know, opening the floodgates on residential development, people might start to engage in speculative parking lot construction. And depending on where you do it, it might end up taking down buildings and reducing property values in the downtown and in the Tiff district. And we talked about this last, last month and Tim Hawkins came up with some examples where that rule is a little bit too binary, a little bit too black and white and might be draconian, draconian in some cases. So I propose, I propose a new version of the rule which gets used in the section of design review where you're going before the DAB and the DRB for permission to demolish a building, right? And actually there are all kinds of other hoops you have to jump through if you want to demolish a building in the downtown anyway. So basically, instead of saying you just can't take a building down for parking or storage, it would say that that's discouraged and especially in the central business district, if you're going to demolish a historic building, then we'd be looking for it to be a special situation such as that this parking is required for a redevelopment project to benefit another historic building or a city project, or as Tim mentioned, that the lot is subject to some sort of pre-existing legal interest or legal option where the demolition of this building for parking had been anticipated for some time and that the person could come and say, hey, look, this is something that is actually in the land records that this is an option. So I think that it does a better job of providing a balance for, there are some cases where, you know, maybe it really should happen, but otherwise we would be able to discourage it. That's why I added in the definition of historic structure as one of the other changes for tonight. Amendment 16 instigates or institutes some limits on what kind of conditions the DRB can put on conditional use review or site plan review cases. This, once again, is one of those state changes that we have to just institute in the zoning. Amendment 17 clarifies what the role of the DAB is, the Design Advisory Board, in terms of what the type of case is coming before them. If a site plan review case is coming before the DAB and it's eventually going to the DRB, the DAB's ruling is advisory. But if it's just a simple facade change and there's no site plan review, the DAB acts as the zoning administrator. And that's the way we've always done it, but our rules actually have kind of been unclear on that. So we're sort of clarifying that and making sure that it's very clear the DAB acts in the administrative role when you're just coming before them and it's not a case that eventually goes to the DRB. That, that means we can also clarify the things like the same rules that apply to, if the ZA waits too long to make a decision, we apply the same rules to the DAB about what you do next. Amendment 18 fixes a typo with how section 703 was formatted. Amendment 19, that adds in some more of that clarification about the DAB rule that I just talked about. Amendment 20 takes some items about public safety out of design review and is putting them into Article nine because like I said, we're trying to consolidate everything about exemptions or limitations or our ability to regulate. Amendment 21, this is where, this is that very thing I just mentioned. So where Article nine, section 903 is the section that talks about permits and approvals and when you need a permit and how you get one. So this is also where we're putting in the rules on exemptions and limitations. So such as work in the city right of way or if a boundary adjustment is created by changes to city or state right of way, accessory structures that are so small that they don't need a permit, but they still have to follow all the rules and regulations. If a, in the future, how we handle emergency work for imminent public safety issues and the, the ultimate, which ultimately is required to eventually be compliant with a permit, but it allows someone to make immediate emergent changes without having a permitting issue right from the outset. And all of the exemptions and limitations from state statute about state-owned buildings and community-owned buildings or churches or landfills or agriculture or telecommunications and forestry and everything, it all gets put right in that section now with this change. Amendment 22 institutes a new 120-day timeline that the DRB has to warrant a hearing for a completed application. That's a new state rule. Amendment 23, so here's a change. There are three parcels or neighborhoods where for some reason they're partially in the service industrial district. And we had proposed that two addresses on Lock Terrace and two addresses and one address on Savage Street and Aldis Street be moved from the service industrial district to their residential district. The property owners on Lock Terrace would like us to give that a little bit more time. And so since this could help us accomplish something on their property having to do with some complications of, you know, properties that are technically separate but always have been used, always, one's always been accessory to the other, being in the service industrial district would allow them to create a use that's accessory to their residential and actually rezoning them as purely residential would prevent them from being able to do what they wanted to do. So we're asking to take a little bit more time on this change to see if there's a better way forward. But the change for Savage Street is still being put forward and the change to take 100 to 120 Federal Street and make it all central business and not split it between central business and service industrial, that is also still in the proposal tonight. And that's it.
Anyone have any questions for Chip? Chip, I have two for you. After the first reading, we talked about, where we talked about household and I brought up the point of boarding houses. How does that tie into that definition?
We have, we have a, we, we have a use that we call lodging house and it is regulated separately from other, you know, traditional dwelling units. The kicker is that you have to self-label yourself as a lodging house. And there are some situations where people might be renting rooms in what otherwise looks like a single-family home or duplex. And we don't have a, we don't have a, a quick enough solution for that to propose something tonight. But it's something we're looking into, we've been looking into the building code and what triggers a public building and what doesn't. And we're going to, we're just going to need some more time to deal with that sort of situation.
But it is on your...
It is on the radar.
And then the other one I had, you talked about small lot development.
Mm-hmm.
And the one that came to mind for me was the one on the corner of Barlow and Upper Weldon where the car, when it's in the driveway, blocks the sidewalk. Is there a requirement on that type of development where there needs to be off-street parking?
Frankly with that, the problem with that house is that it should not have been permitted the way it was.
But my thinking is it's a small lot.
Right.
They did, they weren't able to build something there that didn't work out.
So we sort of entered into the jeopardy with, with the property owner. And one of the things we did is we allowed them to have an ADA, a reasonable accommodation to create that little side parking in the front setback, which they, which they otherwise wouldn't be able to do. And I think, well, we're going to have to maintain that option until such time that they can reconfigure the lot.
I, I get that. I'm fine with what's happened there. I'm just saying for a new development, what if that came forth, someone would instruct a, a small house on a small lot? Do we need to, do we require that a car, a car has to be...
We, that...
That shouldn't have been permanent.
No, no, I get what Tim's saying and I think that you are, despite the existing small lot rule, you're going to get to a point where a lot might still be too small because we still require setbacks, the prominent front entrance and parking has to be over to the side. And for many of the small lots, you could, you could fit a tiny home on there and get the, and get the parking you need, but that's the choice you'd have to make if you want to develop that lot. So typically we would say none of our other rules are relaxed. We really don't have an avenue to relax them. If you want to build on this small lot, then you're going to have to come up with a way to make all the other aspects of it comply with our rules, which includes the off-street parking requirements.
The 815 parking, is there any way that we could then, if we're going to leave that to the DAB or the ADA, specifically specify how it would be presented? Like if they're going to tear down a lot, it has to look a certain way for the entrance. It has to like effort block, visible parking of the cars in that area with fencing and stuff or whatever the rules are. Because I know other cities have done that. Some is ugly, some is, it's not pretty well. Bullshit is made of a nice entrance and I don't think we have that in the land use regs right now, but...
We kind of do. Because you're talking about two different things. You're talking about whether or not you're allowed to demolish is one thing. But the other thing that will also have to be permitted is what, is what it's going to be used for next and what it's going to look like. And when approving a demolition, the DAB and the DRB can both say, yeah, okay, maybe you can demolish it, but this is what the lot's going to look like in the meantime. So all of those things can come into play, including all the screening and buffering and all those aspects. Yeah.
That's almost a swear that Newport Hall, like if they take it down, then it's taken a while to get done, even when it's done, doesn't look the same.
Right.
Any other questions for Chip?
When the state decides to change the rules again, will we have to, will you have to go through all, all of this again? And when maybe they realize that their parking rules are going to cause a problem in dense cities like ours, like well, is there, is there an avenue to go back and say, hey, folks, this didn't work really that well? The parking is, is a worry. The more people we get, one and a half spots per unit doesn't seem like, it's a big change from what we had.
Yeah. That would translate, that translates into two spots for a single-family home, three for a duplex, four for a triplex. And five, five for a quad. Yeah, I mean, whenever the state changes their rules, we follow the legal interpretation that their changes are suddenly in effect. They supersede ours. So the first thing we do is in the permitting office, we say, hey, look, every time a development, a permit comes before you, you now have to take this state rule into account as well as our zoning. And then we eventually get it into the zoning. So yeah, every once in a while, we have to do this exercise because of a state change. That's why we're here.
Thanks for working on that.
Any other questions? So this was second reading. We had the first reading in May, I guess it was, so...
I want a motion.
So yeah, so now we need a motion to accept the amendment that is presented.
I'll make that motion to accept, adopt the amendments of land development regulations.
Second. So I have a motion, a second. Any final comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion is approved. Chip, thank you for your work on that.
Greatly appreciated. I would entertain a motion to recess from our meeting to move into liquor control.
A motion of recess for liquor control.
Second. Motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Kelly and James, thanks for joining us. Come on up.
Thanks for having us.
Hey guys, how are you?
We are good, Nicole. Welcome.
Okay, tonight I have Jason and Kelly here. They are going to be taking orders of steed food, so they are here to get their Google and their licenses.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And we are packing, you guys have their first, third, and outdoor, their insurance information. I do have a copy of their lease agreement if you want to see that. I did not put that in your packets. All their speed, their bill of meals is included in there, their IRS information.
Thanks for coming in. I know you two have been in the business for a while. Do you want to just summarize that for folks so they understand where you've been?
Absolutely, yep. We've both been JUP employees since about 2018. We love the St. Alvin's community. We want to be here on the corner for a long time. We have both maintained our liquor server certificates throughout that time period as well.
No violations.
No violations. They haven't had any since the last four years that I've been.
Any questions?
Do you guys understand that the city of St. Alvin's has an extra set of ordinances revolving around liquor above and beyond the state?
I'm not intimately familiar.
It's, it's pretty much, it's pretty much all the same as the state, but just so you know that there is separate set of ordinances that maybe we should give them a copy of.
I did, you found them a copy today, that's the...
Okay, yes, I read through that. I'll take a closer look.
Yeah, it's pretty much, it's pretty much all the same stuff.
Sure. And same plant and same operating hours, as I said, so I don't have any concerns there.
Yep.
What's the, what's the highlighted difference, just for my own knowledge? Is there a quick summary?
The difference, the main difference is, is that we can, if DLC comes in, they can issue fines and blah, 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 but even if they don't, if DLC doesn't find them, doesn't mean we can't.
Okay.
We take a more proactive role in reviewing their performance and we consider that when we issue the license next year.
When, when Timmy passed it, the argument was that if, you know, if one gas station got hit and then another gas station got hit and they're the same owner, technically they're different licenses. I think that was one of the big pushes at the time. And so you get one first offense fine and one first offense fine. And at the time, Tim was arguing, well, it's the same operation, the same management. Obviously there's a problem and so the city can go above and beyond.
Okay. Thanks.
If I'm right, I mean...
Yeah, yeah.
But it's not, it's nothing, you know, it's nothing big.
We just didn't, we didn't, we wanted to be in the driver's seat, you know, and it was a little more oriented towards the bars than the restaurants and if DLC wasn't taking it seriously enough, we wanted to be able to lean into it.
When are you guys going to take it over?
Hopefully a month from now.
Yeah.
Good for you.
Any changes planned?
Not as of right now.
Pretty successful business.
Yeah.
Few more efficiencies, but nothing you all will notice as our customers right off the bat.
And maybe one quick recommendation, just because I run into it a lot. If you do your liquor certification through the state and not through this, when you do go to renew licenses and stuff like that, they can look it up.
We've already found that out, yep.
The licenses, indoor, outdoor, yeah? As it all said, it's indoor and outdoor for the sidewalk.
And it's just three tables under the awning at this point for outdoor consumption. We're not looking to expand.
Any other questions? Any other questions for Kelly or James? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
Need to prepare liquor license.
Yeah, I'll second it.
We have a motion from Chad, seconded by Trudy. Any further questions, comments?
Hello?
All in favor, yeah, Trudy went out there, yeah. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the opposition?
Yeah.
Hearing none, liquor license. Thank you for your interest in taking it over. Trudy has one last comment.
Good luck. I remember you, Kelly.
Yes.
I remember you as a little tape.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks very so much.
Thank you for coming in.
Issue a liquor license.
Yeah, absolutely.
World goes round, huh?
I know, right? I've been out of the wild.
Make a motion, I mean, move from liquor to regular session.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, Sarah has joined us to go over the enterprise budget.
Now for the main event. What I'm handing out is the same thing you have in your packet, but it has row numbers and page numbers. So when we get to that point, we can all navigate a little bit. There it goes.
Thank you.
Just in case. Then I have to put these arms back down. Chip always puts them up. All right. Good evening.
Good evening, Sarah. Thanks for joining us.
Pleasure to be here. So as you said, tonight we are talking about the FY26 water, wastewater, and stormwater budgets. Water, wastewater, and stormwater make up the city's three enterprise funds. An enterprise fund is a business-type activity of the city. It differs from the general fund in that it is, it is expected that it will recover all of its costs through user fees and all of its costs include capital, debt service, reserves, and operating. And that we will set the user fees at a level sufficient to cover those costs each year. We, I'll get to the, the bottom line upfront. The budgets as proposed would result in the average city customer seeing about a 7.5% increase in their combined water, sewer, and stormwater bill. This is about $10 a month. Just as a note, customers outside of the city would see a 7% increase, still around $10 a month. This is slightly lower because the city's bill includes the stormwater fee. And when you get outside of city limits, the stormwater is managed by the other municipalities. The changes in these budgets boil down to four priority items. The first of which, and the single largest line item, the single largest increase is dealing with sludge removal costs, which have increased dramatically over the last few years. We're really at the mercy of the market here. We have fewer places to take our sludge, fewer people to take it there. And only one person right now, or one company right now, who will come and de-water mobily when our centrifuge is down. Our centrifuge is aging and we've seen over the last few years that we've had more repairs, planned and unplanned, which have also caused a spike in sludge removal. In the long term, we are working with our consulting engineers to put together a plan to address the ongoing issue of sludge management, which is not going anywhere. And we're putting out an RFP for de-watering services, sludge hauling, and disposal. In the near term, we have to set a budget for FY26 that will cover our operating experience. I'm proposing that we increase this line item from the $250,000 that it has been to $480,000. And I believe with any luck, and maybe only one or two breakdowns of the centrifuge, that will take us through 26 more closely to target than we have been the last few years. The second largest item of increase is also in the wastewater fund and it's a combined increase in the repair and maintenance line and the other professional services line. As I noted already, we've seen more frequent breakdowns of the centrifuge. You should also be aware that repairs at the wastewater treatment facility also often require a professional to come on site. So repair and maintenance and other professional services usually go hand in hand. Chemicals in the wastewater budget are almost caught up with our actual experience. We have seen stabilized chemical costs over the last year, unlike the, the last two years. I don't know if you recall, two years ago, I came and said, surprise, chlorine's up 142%. Chlorine has stabilized. There are a few others that have spiked, but for the most part, we're seeing those rates, the costs of chemicals level off. The last priority change is to increase the budget stabilization line in both water and wastewater from $100,000 each to $125,000. This was a recommendation of the finance committee that staff fully supports. Those line items were first introduced in the budgets in fiscal years 2012. And they have been $100,000 every year since 2012. Outside of these four priority items, there are no other changes to operations or programs. We find that operations remain stable. We have normal fluctuations in capital spending. Our debt service payments are continuing as scheduled. To help mitigate these costs though, because they are a substantial chunk of change, just these four items, about $490,000 or $450,000 combined, we've done two things. The first thing that we did is we eliminated a vacant position that we don't need. We had a meter technician budgeted the last two years or the last year at least. And that role has been filled with existing public work staff and we no longer need that separate position. So we've eliminated that from the budget and we're proposing to use reserve funds in the water fund and the wastewater fund to pay for FY26 capital. This is precisely the type of thing that the reserve funds are there for. A 7.5% rate increase is higher than we have seen. I know that was coming on heels of a, a 9% budget tax increase. And so we wanted to make sure that we were really thinking about how we can lower costs in this budget outside of those four priority items. As a note, the water fund currently has $394,000 in reserves and the wastewater has $479,000. We would reduce the water by $135,000 and wastewater by $182,000, so about a third each. And as we go along, allocation fees replenish those reserves, budget stabilization lines, if we don't need it, replenishes those reserves as well. Speaking of capital, our capital expenses this year, the list is smaller than the last couple of years. It includes year two of three for replacing turbidity meters, filter valves, and rehabilitating pumps in the water system. We're continuing to work on upgrading MXUs throughout the system. We have 1,035 accounts left to upgrade. And we've begun updating old meters as we find them. And so that project is continuing in the capital budget and it's evolving to keep our meter and MXU stock up to date along with.
What's the definition of an old meter?
I think we're finding them that are 20 years or more.
Over that in some cases.
So they never got transferred to the electronic reading, if you will?
Well, they still have the reader, the MXU, but the meter itself, still working and everything.
So we're, we're expanding the scope of that program a little bit. Wastewater capital includes engineering and disposal costs to remove media and the trickling filter. We need to empty the trickling filter out and investigate why media is falling down through the bottom. And so there are funds to start that project in the wastewater budget. And all of that is going to be funded with reserves. In the stormwater fund, we'll see capital expenses in the upcoming year for the Lemna Drive stormwater project. That was included and approved in the FY25 budget. And we'll likely see some expenditure or expenses starting from the Houghton Park underground storage that was approved by voters in March. There is no new debt proposed in these budgets. We have scheduled debt repayment beginning on three new items, the Aldis Hill water tank, the asset management plan, and the vector truck. And next, I'd like to draw your attention to the packet that I handed out. We're gonna go straight to page four of four in this packet. All right, that's a, it's a lot of paper. Narrative summary, rate summary, summary budgets, detailed budgets. So if we're looking at the back page of the numbered line items, the numbered sheet, this is a summary budget for all enterprise funds combined. So that you can see the impact really on the user's experience of all of the detail in the big sheets. And I'd like to draw your attention to row 73, which is user fees. These are user fees for water, wastewater, and stormwater. The overall budget to change here is $440,000. Compare that to the budget impacted the four priority items, which is $449,000. You can see that we have mitigated costs elsewhere through our cost savings tactics to make sure, to, to really limit the increase to these four priority items that I discussed previously. If you work your way down the sheet, you can see on row 85, purchased in professional services. This is where, this is the summary budget line item for sludge removal, other professional services. And we talked about the sludge removal increase and the OPS increase. You can see that reflected in the dollar change of $320,000. You can see in line, what did it go here? Line 90, which is a summary of other. This is where the budget stabilization is. The budget stabilization lines, recall, increased $50,000 total. You can see that right here in the summary budget. We have our increase in chemicals and our planned debt service in row 93. You may have noticed in poring over these documents over the weekend, that the bottom line spend in each of these budgets is down. This is directly correlated with a, with a reduction in capital spending from last year to this year. You can see that reduction in line 94. Our proposed $367,000 of capital spending this year is $1.8 million less than last year. This is not alarming. Recall in last year's budget, we had a full million dollars budgeted for the Lemna Drive project. That has not been budgeted again. That's the cost for the project and we are working on it now. We also had a $750,000 vector truck budgeted, placed in the FY25 budget, so that's fallen off. And $152,000 for the asset management plan. So we had some large items in these budgets last year. All of those were debt and grant funded. And so the reduction in capital spending is pushing down the overall spend in each of the budgets. That concludes my summary overview of the budgets. I would be happy to take questions from here or take the council's direction into the detail if you'd like to go there.
The mobile centrifuge, is that the purchase in professional services line?
That is included, yes. So the mobile centrifuge is booked under sludge removal and that is included in the summary of purchased in professional services. And if you look in the wastewater large sheets with the orange column on the back page, line 158, all of that is in the sludge removal line.
And I guess my other question is for sludge removal. If our machine, if our centrifuge worked 100% all the time, we would never need sludge removal or we'd still need sand?
We would absolutely still need sludge removal because our tanks can only hold so much. But we wouldn't need mobile de-watering, which is quite expensive. Cause we would spin it ourselves and put the liquids back in the system and then the, the dried solids, the cake would be pulled off to be disposed of. Really, is this, all this discussion's ruining cake for me.
So is the, maybe this, either you or Chip, but user fees when we talk about for stormwater, those are all the stormwater fees that each property owner gets billed for?
Yeah.
And we only bring, currently, we only bring in $372,000, it looks that way.
Uh, that's correct. The current year's $372,800. We're proposing for FY26 $416,000 to come in in stormwater fees.
And then Marty, rehab of the old water tank. I didn't see, I might have missed it, but is that in the works?
That's ongoing. We just had the inspection last week. So we're waiting for the results of that inspection to determine how we move forward.
So you don't know what the cost of that is yet? And will that be reflected?
It is not in these current budgets. These would go into effect July 1st. But I do think we would work with our engineers and the state program to see what's available and potentially tap some of the water fund reserves if we needed to get going sooner rather than later.
So some of the costs for repairs, like what happened on Lower Newton just the other day, would be out of that other? Or is that just maintenance anticipation?
Maybe. Tell me more about what happened on Lower Newton the other day.
That was the brown water, waste area in brown water.
So we had a main break on our 16-inch line.
Oh, that was when the main broke.
Yeah.
So we repaired it and we have a lot of materials in-house to repair it. It's all just ongoing maintenance.
And what's the ongoing plan for invest, like, I know we're looking for a tank, but what are we putting into the cost to, like, can, is there any way to assess the system without tearing it out of the ground? Cause is there drones they could put through? Or is there ground x-ray they can use or anticipate other major repairs are gonna have to come along?
Yeah, there's a lot of work in the process of doing a lead survey right now on our system. That's basically just looking through what we have for documents. It's not taking anything up or anything like that. But to go further than that would be a much bigger project.
Is it typical though that municipalities mostly play, play defense rather than being, you're reactive instead of proactive with that type of?
We are a reactive organization.
I mean.
Very seldom are we proactive with that. And that's just the nature of the beast.
Right. That's kind of what I was thinking.
You know, in, in that particular, usually you can pinpoint why you have a main, like in the winter time, it's the ground shifts and stuff. That one there had a lateral crack down the 20-foot section of pipe. How are we bad fighting and it just drives a gateway?
Any other questions for Sarah or Marty?
No, I, I think, I'll just add that in the finance committee meeting, we had a, Jesus Christ. We had a lot of talk about the centrifuge and its downtime and how that cost is going up and up and up. And we're kind of hoping that, you know, over time, you know, it was just announced that the town is thinking about changing intersection down by the bay and it was noted that they were interested in maybe getting some water and sewer down there and blah, blah, blah. I think one of the reasons why we increased that budget stabilization is because I think what we talked about a lot, sooner rather than later, it might be more financially preferable to have either a second centrifuge for when one goes down or for increased usage. Cause we're paying a lot during that downtime and there's gotta be a tipping point at some point. When are we spending more to rent a system versus a second system or a backup system? So I don't know if that's, that's probably not something that, that doesn't concern this budget, but I think it's something that's gonna come up sooner rather than later.
Is Sanus Act the only one with a centrifuge?
They're currently the only one on our list, but we're hoping that the RFP, the engineers helping us put together, will drum up some additional supply to meet our ongoing demand.
They just contracted that Oracle centrifuge to the Midwest for a project that are going up there. So they're a few in progress.
Which is why the price keeps going up. Supply and demand. Gotta take care of it.
I was gonna say, I think we're fortunate that we ship to Franklin, New York. A project we had done for work, we sent to Quebec City. There are many options on.
There's no land application in Vermont. There's one site within reasonable distance in New York, but it's gonna require testing of the cake to see exactly what's in it to determine whether they would take it.
And we're not alone, obviously.
Every other municipality in the state of Vermont.
Any other questions for Sarah or Marty?
Thank you for that riveting presentation.
You're welcome.
Do we need to make a vote whether we approve this budget or not?
I will make a motion to adopt the budget for water, wastewater, and stormwater funds.
A motion from Trudy, seconded by Eric. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Sarah, thank you for your time. And are you back?
I have one more thing while I have your undivided attention. I just have two documents that need to be signed for the previously approved asset management plan. It's been a while since we talked about this. It's been a while since we talked about this. All the documents have been queued up by the state and the bond bank. I've flagged, there are two of them, there are three signatures each. Tim, you're on all three of them. Everyone else, you're on number two and three. I'll pass these around from Chad over and then I'll get it from you.
Thank you. May want to stick around and make sure we do it right, Sarah?
I can do that for sure, but you are free to move on.
And we move on to item number eight, which is redevelopment discussions. Dom, I'll turn that over to you.
Thank you. We have two requests tonight. First is for eleven thousand three hundred from the redevelopment fund for the design and construction of a mural in the alleyway between the Red House Suites and Royal City Market buildings. There's an artist's proposal on conceptual design in the packet. Welcome to the questions.
Since we're putting money towards it, do we have to enter our queue out or is it too long for that?
No, it's within our financial procurement practices.
And the fact that it's a local artist is nice.
I just wanted to see money.
We got a pretty high threshold.
Understanding for the public, we're starting small and we may grow this program, if you will.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of potential for murals around the city to contribute generally to the vitality. The streetscape, it's an opportunity for folks to take a selfie and show that they were in St. Alden's, Vermont. It's the way it brightens up the dark alleyway. And if this goes well, we want to come.
Thank you, Dom. Anything to motion?
It's okay. We'll make a motion to appropriate eleven thousand three hundred dollars from the redevelopment fund for the design and construction of a mural in the alleyway between the Red House Suites and Royal City Market.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Marie. Motion in a second. Any other questions for Dom?
What's the, like, estimated time that they would get started?
This summer.
Start seeing some action.
This construction season.
Cool, great.
They've already done some legwork, so they're sort of, got their leg up on it.
They've got a leg up.
So.
They're on the fly.
So we have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, motion passes for the mural. Second one is to consider a motion to appropriate ten thousand for the redevelopment fund for the artist and residents' roof replacement.
Oh, a motion for us to approve ten thousand for redevelopment fund for artists and residents' roof replacement.
Motion by Eric, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Lindsay. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. We now move on. Chip, we'll bring you back briefly. Consider appointment of Richard Saul to the Northwest Rail Trail Council.
Richard's been sitting on the council for us for three years. He's a rail trail newbie, so he'd be happy to be reappointed.
Richard also sits on our historic board, well, maybe. Anyone have any questions of Chip on this?
I move to reappoint Richard Saul to the Northwest Rail Trail Council.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes. And then we move on to mayor's report. Marty, I'd like to get with you after, I have a couple of questions about trees, potential removal, seeing what you're, what you have planned for the summer, like you have in the past, but we can touch on that. So I was contacted by someone in Eric's ward to take a look at one, so I'll share that with you. Speaking of trees, Dom, Chip and I met with Greenmount Power. We met for about forty-five minutes, took a walk up Congress and Messenger to showcase some of the trees and how they were pruned and how ugly it turned out and a lot of comments by residents. I had to depart a little early. Dom, do you want to summarize what, how we left that?
We got that all fixed for you, Mayor.
The trees are all going back?
They're going to be gluing the bridge back up.
We had a follow-up from GMP, which we can circulate, but essentially GMP agreed to give us more of a heads up going forward and work more in consultation with our staff and/or consultant forester. Chip and I are going to be preparing some regulations for the council to consider that makes that a little bit more, process a little bit more formal and has some fines in place if somebody removes a tree unauthorized. And so we're holding a decent hand, I think, to formalize that program and get a little bit more, if not into the driver's seat, at least riding shotgun.
Did you happen to hear from any other communities? I know that not everyone has a tree scape like us, but.
Yeah. You know, like all of us probably since this happened, we've been looking at every other day around the state. I continue to think we're kind of uniquely positioned because of the size of our green belts. I haven't made it into Burlington to see how they're handling it. They also have some large green belts. I think it's been in a perfect storm of our green belts and our commitment to being a tree city.
Vermont has a lot of varied lines too, right?
I mean, they control the utility, so it's a little easier.
Yeah, I gotta believe they're not doing five to seven-year cuts. They're probably doing more, more smaller. But thank you for that. Thanks, Chip, for the conversation and Dom. I don't think I have anything else. We'll move on to council reports. Chad, we'll start at your end.
Yeah, I don't have much. Another tree thing. There is a limb down on the corner of Diamond and South Main that's blocking the sidewalk. Is it, did it clean it up? Perfect, that's all I have.
Just this morning.
Beautiful.
Just to build off that, I think the expectation, I've seen a lot of limbs brought to the roadside. It's not our policy to pick up, I mean, it's a different story if we have a windstorm and we're trying to help folks out, but on a regular basis, we're not, we're not traveling the city picking up limbs from people's backyards that they bring to the curbside, right?
And pretty much everyone knows that. We'll get a call once in a while, but if it's a greenbelt tree, we'll take care of it.
I just, I've seen lately people bringing stuff to the greenbelt with the expectation that we're going to pick them up.
That might be GMP.
Yeah, right? There were limbs left over from. Marie, what do you have?
Not much in my ward. Things are pretty good. I did have one person call me about panhandling and she was getting frustrated with that particular thing happening all the time that she's out shopping, whether it be Main Street or the shopping centers is where she actually pointed it out. So I don't know if there's anything we can do about that. It just seems to be a continual thing. I got hit up one day on South Main Street. This person was concerned because they said, you know, they're afraid that whoever's hitting them up would retaliate, you know, with a, either gun or knife or something, you know, or hurt the person. So I don't know if there's something that can be done about that, but maybe we could just try to get a handle on that, it would be good. Also, I've been noticing some in my neighborhood, in my ward, the lawns again. You know, we're beyond no mo may now, so a lot of lawns looking kind of shabby. Of course, I know we talked about it a little bit before with the weather being so wet, it's not always possible to get to it, but there's some that really need a good cleanup, so you might want to take a look at that too. But that's about all I have. Things are pretty good.
Thanks, Marie. You want to?
Yeah, everything seems pretty good. I don't really have any updates. We met, the three of us met for a public safety meeting a little earlier. Anything setting about that? Anything specific in your ward?
Thank you.
Eric? Sorry, I have to. First one I had, just four of them. Parking along Barlow and Upper Weldon around the Barlow Street School and Ever Johnson Park during the green up day. We found, I mean, I know it's an issue ongoing, but it's the first year in three years of cleaning up there for myself, that we found a needle along with other, just trash that would be relatable around the parking area up there. And I know there's a tough time we've had over the years enforcing that area because you can't catch them in the act. One of the neighbors I reached out to that lives right across the street from Ever Park mentioned that they've seen people walk up from the villa, do handoffs with this guy at the car. Guy gets in the car, drives off and they walk back to the villa. So I had the thought, I'm going to follow up with the chief, it's kind of like an intro to it, would be to like ban certain hours of parking around that area and that way the police have something to say, hey, move on. Even if they can't bust them for drugs, at least there's that pressure of like, hey, they have a reason to only get out. I talked to two neighbors across from them and both kind of gave support for some sort of ban on the parking in that area. And I say both sides because the other side, we either need to work with whoever manages the property. I think we do, right? It's all our property still, we just rented to, yeah. The parking area down the bottom is kind of destroyed by one of the tenant buildings. They tend to park up on the grass, they can park all around it. And I don't want to prevent them from having public parking to park at, but if we put this up there too, it might encourage them to go up to like the paved curbside where it's all lit next to the school or, I don't know. But we're looking into that.
Go to the school.
I know, yeah. For parking, not for drug use. I had a thought shifting to the broken pipeline. I appreciate getting up on social right away. I was wondering, I work in Milton, so I watch their site. Whenever they have breakdowns, like they've even had accidents on roads to shut down roads or extend a period of the day, they have a banner that pops up at the top of their site that says like, East Road is closed right now. I don't know if whoever's doing the social, because I know we can do banners, might have access to also do those right away. I know that I'm on social media, I'm a marketer, my partner is, but our first stop is always like kind of looking towards the city website and then finding the St. Alden's pages to see if we posted there. And that's where we define eventually. But I know many people don't use social anymore and having a spot to go to with your website doesn't know what's happening. So just food for thought on that. I know we can't do anything about the panhandler up at nineteen, but they're still leaving garbage up there and I know it's a safety issue. People, almost rear-ended people as they stop to give them money. I don't know if we can ask this town to do something about that spot or what, but. It's a state? It's a town area also, right? Do they do road?
One oh four.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
I wasn't sure.
That's not a great spot to be.
And the last one I have is a good note. Block Party is on for July twelfth, rain date of the thirteenth, eleven to three. I'm working on a contest I'll announce shortly. Hopefully people will be involved in, but we're going to have rec games. We're going to have music, burgers, dogs, cheeseburgers, lemonade, iced tea and sides, just like last year. But I'm encouraging everyone to come, hang out, have fun.
So hard lemonade and hard iced tea.
I don't know what you do in your cup after you take either of them. Balsi Market is contributing food at cost, so again this year, so if we run out, we can go over there and just get more. It was a hit last year, I'm hoping it's a hit again this year, so.
Hate to rush July twelfth on.
Yeah.
Sounds fun.
One month.
Trudy?
Just piggybacking on the panhandling, don't we have an ordinance in the city about panhandling?
It's an old one and it might not, it might not withstand current constitutional challenges and precedent, but.
I know that, I don't know if it's still there, but the sign says like, instead of giving money to people asking for it, donate to, you know, this is a place you can, like, local charities to support folks.
Says contribute to the solution.
Right, so, so it doesn't, nothing would prohibit us or the town from putting those signs up. You can't like obviously arrest somebody if they're panhandling, but you could put signs up to have people think about, you know, the choices they're making and donate to Martha's Kitchen or to Tim's House or something like that instead. And the park hours, we talked about when we met at the public safety meeting today. We're going to try to meet in Taylor Park. Great idea, Lindsay. We talked about park hours and rules and I think that that could have, what we are talking about for Taylor Park would also apply to Barlow, to Houghton and any of the parks that we have in the city. So if we establish some park hours, that might also help at Barlow Street for the situation you're talking about.
We have hours posted for Taylor Park.
Okay, but if we extend that to Houghton Park and.
Well, we have hours for all the parks in New York.
Okay.
Yeah, Ever Park's kind of greater because it's parking outside a park.
But it's still the park?
It is, I know, yeah. We just also.
Yeah, okay.
We have signs posted at Houghton and Barlow on the hours. I don't know. I don't think.
I think it's at dusk. Park closes at dusk.
And we have signs about smoking, but they're still smoking to a park.
Any more? Not done. Pride Parade was a great success. I got to march with NCSS. It was a lot of fun, a lot of good energy in the park with the people participating in the event and the farmer's market was really nice. And my only question was, is there a way that we can be clear with people about their free piles? I think that sometimes, even myself included, like I don't know the exact rules and I love a good free pile, but I don't leave it out for a very long time and I don't leave it out in the rain. So I think recycling is a good thing, but it's not good when people put their couch out there that no one's ever going to take. So do we have like some set rules around that that we could communicate with people in a better way? And like maybe say, hey, instead of leaving your yucky couch here, you could call Habitat for Humanity and maybe they'll come get it or.
Be part of the solution.
Yes.
We communicate with those people on a weekly basis.
I don't, not, not just like those people that break the rules, but everybody. Like it's, I haven't seen anything like, and I.
This would be a good place for the Johnson Journal, the regular city newsletter that needs to come out.
Or even just on, even just on the city's, you know, the, I mean, I think to say like, we know it's spring cleaning season and you might be going through some things and you want to recycle, like start positive and say, these are the rules.
This is where we need to hit that type of thing. We need to get out in front of it and say, I think we need to change.
Proactive.
Needs to be asked the city, which I think could be the column header, right?
Yeah, what about the free piles? How long can I leave it out before I get a fine? How long is it?
I don't know what to do with my stuff. Who do I call? Go, Spatula.
How long is it? Is it like a couple of days or?
Depends on the ward.
Okay. I have mine nicely displayed with a tablecloth and a sign and everything.
They took all your stuff off the table and dropped the table?
No, they don't. They're very polite and respectful. That's, that's all I've got.
One last thing. We were given a flag from the Maple Festival for our continued support, which I know staff has had discussions about it before, so moving forward, I think that support will be more defined, if you will, so. Where you would like to put it, but.
That'd be great.
And you get a, for each year that you support, you get another gold leaf to put on the, put on the tree. It's nice, actually it's a good.
It's a nice looking sign.
All right, let's move on to approval of minutes.
We'll make a motion to approve the minutes from five twelve twenty-five.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Are there any corrections, changes, amendments to the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
I make a motion to approve a warrant.
You're quick, you're like Tim.
Well, I've got a, you know.
So we have a motion in a second to approve warrant from five thirty-one twenty-five. Any comments, questions? Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Warrant approved, and motion adjourned.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We adjourn that 8:46. Where's Mr.?